Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order at 6:00 PM. And we'll start with City and County of Honolulu, Honolulu Fire Department. Okay, if they show up, we'll come back to them. Next up, we'll take the Honolulu Police Department.
There I am. Good evening, Brian Morris, first time I've been here Sergeant Brian Morris, my partner back there, he taught me everything I know. Yeah, I think you've met him before. Sergeant Cassavar. Mr. Char, pleasure to meet you. And everyone in tennis, pleasure to meet you all. We're gonna talk about today's Tavana cases in the area over the last month, the month of March. I have the stats here, you can also find the stats at HonoluluPD.org if you wanna look on your own. But the stats for the area, first of all, motor vehicle theft, month of March had nine. Month before fifteen, so it's gotten better, it has gotten better. Burglaries are down three in the month of March, ten the month previously. Car break-ins has gone up forty-two in the month of March, whereas thirty-four in the previous month. Assaults, eight last month, eight the month before, so that stayed even. Sex assaults also stayed even, three and three for both months. Graffitis, you guys are doing a great job. Zero graffiti's over the last two months reported. I know what's happening, zero were reported. Drug cases has gone down, it's two in the last month, and it's four the previous month. Total calls for service last month, two thousand three hundred and seventy-four. And that is up slightly from the previous month, which is two thousand one hundred and sixty-five. When it comes to theft, thefts are numerous different things, such as pickpocketing, purse snatching, theft of bicycles, all of that kinda stuff, yeah? Prospect, behind the middle school, Stevens Middle School, there's been complaints of homeless encampments back there. Don't have the numbers on it, right behind the middle school. Yesterday, our bikes, our ATVs, and also our drone section went up there and checked. If you get any complaints about drones yesterday, it was us. We notified the middle school, but it was us. We found seven encampments up there. Five of them, appears nobody's staying in. Two appears are still being stayed in, but yesterday when we were there, nobody was in there, they're empty. But I was told from the bikes guys that, is that Hawaiian homeland's property, I'm being told? And they're also looking and they're gonna help with us to take care of that problem up there, but yesterday there was nobody there, two tents, nobody in. That's the latest on that. Traffic enforcement, I heard from, first time coming here, but last time Prospect alapai was brought up, that five-way stop sign. Total, we had twenty-two citations given up there. Um, night watch had a bunch, Sergeant MacKee's night watch, day watch, not as much sadly. The problem with that intersection is everything comes to a point. Everything could, they all be right in the middle. There's no place for us to sit during the day where they're not gonna see us. We don't try to hide, but we stick out. We do still enforce, in fact, I myself gave one today, you know, it's a move we're still, and we're gonna keep enforcing up there. Day watch, night watch, we're gonna keep enforcing when we can, we see a violation, we will address it. The other location I was told to check was Lunalelo and Pequay, I guess that's a big problem. I know it's a big problem, I've sat in that traffic over there. A little bit less tickets over the twelve sadly, but we're gonna get fourth watch involved. Fourth watches are new officers. They come on in groups like five, six, sometimes ten. I already have it approved, they're gonna come, I don't know when. They do a bunch of other assignments too, but they're gonna come out one day and they're just gonna, I mean, do what they can do, cite. Problem we have over there too is not only, if we cite, that's great, people learn, but then we cause more traffic too. Because there's really no place we can stop them that's not in the middle of the road. But we're gonna enforce, and then like for patrol wives, myself and this sergeant, we see a violation, we will take care of the violation, we'll address it as such. Okay, and then um, we continue to do park and lookout checks for our CPs for, I know night watch has problems with people acting stupid in their cars, that kinda stuff. Day watch, car break-ins at the lookout on the parks, we're checking all the time. In fact, I drove up around Townless yesterday, gotta fix the road, it's bumpy. But I drove around it yesterday, it was empty. Save the tip for the month. Drive carefully, supposed to rain tonight, supposed to rain tomorrow. Twenty-two fatalities so far on the island of Oahu, as of a couple hours ago. There is a critical in Nauna Kuli. I don't know of the update on that one, but as of, as of two hours ago, twenty-two fatalities, that's way up from last year. How we can solve it, drive carefully, follow the, follow the laws. Pedestrians use crosswalks. I just came from a wreck over here, we're coming here, Wilder and Pensacola, you might've got stuck in it, pedestrian versus car. Pedestrians okay, and he was in the crosswalk. Drivers have to watch pedestrians as well. And other than that, three-day weekend, stay dry, be good, and I'll take any of your questions. That's all I have.
Okay, starting with questions from the board.
That's me.
Okay, go ahead Claire.
Sergeant Morris, thank you twenty-two times for the twenty-two citations. I'm the board member who asked you folks to take a peek over there because we're having safety issues for both drivers and pedestrians. Were the citations all for running the stop sign?
Most of them were, but would those come other violations too, like for example, no license, possibly tax and safety? Predominantly with stop signs, yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, and please keep an eye on it because it's getting scary. People don't know how to manage the five-way stop. And when you try to cross, the folks coming up Eolani, that stop sign is set so far back, they can't see over the rise, so they start zooming forward as people do after a stop sign. And you're crossing the street, and I almost got nailed twice this week already. So thank you for that, and I did encounter the police officers on their ATVs and their drones yesterday morning when I was out for my walk. And they explained what they were doing, and it's kinda funny because before they went back in with the drones, I saw a homeless person go in there with his stuff. So maybe they have another secret encampment somewhere. But I'm very grateful that they're doing something because we've had fires there, and the last one was a week before on April seventh. And I know because someone in my neighborhood called me at five-thirty in the morning to tell me about the fire.
Three in the morning, I think, the other fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read about it, yeah.
And I woke up smelling smoke, thinking my tomato plant got too close to the grow light, you know, I was just so dumb, but the smoke was from that fire. So yeah, we need to do, be proactive to mitigate that, there are these fires that are starting in Punchbowl. So thank you to HPD for getting involved with that, because it is federal property as well, and, and for the twenty-two citations, yay. We'll make that intersection safer, thank you so much.
Okay, we'll get to you in just a hot second. Uh, okay, I just have to, I'll indulge myself for a hot moment here. Um, so HPD has, uh, you know, checked out our community gardens quite a bit. Uh, since the January first of this year, I got statistics saying that, you know, you're here on a hundred eighty occasions, sixty-two port closure citations, eleven sidewalk structure citations, and eight litter citations, as well as one arrest. Uh, would you say that a fence around our community gardens would significantly help in trying to police that area?
Very much so, very much so.
Because yeah, you guys have been doing a good job, but still, it's just because of the difficulties of it, uh, yeah, so you would say that a fence would definitely help.
Anything to make it harder for them to get in, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, are there any other comments and questions from board members? Okay, if you could come up to the mic and give us your name again.
Uh, Rich Kaz. So I just wanted to send a big aloha and big mahalo to HPD. These guys have been coming out to our neighborhood a lot, uh, and really their focus and, you know, just being there. And, you know, our neighbors, everybody really appreciates everything that you guys have been doing, you know, just the presence coming down, but also taking care of a lot of things that has been going on. But I just wanted to just send my aloha, and thank you so much. I mean, it's just been great to see you guys be there and, and take care of a lot of things that we've been having problems with. But uh, yeah, I just wanted to just appreciate that, as well as the neighbors, they're, they're really happy about all the things that are on. Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, oh, yes, if you could, uh, oh, let me bring you a mic.
Okay, I'm June. Um, I have a question for either watch. You know, fifteen twenty-five Leholiho Street is the house that caught fire before?
Yeah.
Okay, the grass is growing and growing. So we spoke with the guy that made the, you know, he locked the fence so the homeless cannot get inside. But he said he only takes care of the exterior, so we're worried about, you know, because we can see from our window, yeah? Every day we have to look and see if there's any, I told them, you know, that all it takes is somebody to flip their cigarette over there and that's it, it can catch fire. You know, it's gonna be really bad.
You know that with the city?
That abandoned place?
No, it's not, it's not abandoned. Actually, Mizu has the guy's number. Yeah, so I don't know if he followed up.
Yeah, talk one off to Mizushima.
Yeah.
I can check with him, I, he's, I can check with him.
Yeah, it's a really big concern.
It would be.
And then talking about the, um,
Yeah, I'm kinda backing up for you.
Um, the mini park.
Yeah.
It is a problem. Because one day we're walking down and had all these shopping carts. And then my daughter, um, we actually didn't have room on the sidewalks, so we had to walk on Pequay Street. And the cars were coming towards us and people, you know, they stick your middle finger and all that stuff at us, and anyway, so my daughter went forward off the wheelchair because of the crack.
Is that, is that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is that all day or during the day it's worse than night?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so it's all day, daytime, okay.
Yeah.
And I, I work tomorrow, I'll have them check tomorrow and have them check throughout my days, and I'll let Officer Wakabayashi, when he comes back from vacation. When he's not on vacation, somebody else can ask the officer to check. I'll let the command know, we can, we can work on that.
Yeah, because that day when my daughter fell, Mizushima actually came. He said, okay, sighted them at the cemetery. And then they moved down there, so then soon as they arrived, they were smoking ice underneath their umbrella. You know, so then they had to move, they, you know, they got sighted again.
Yeah.
And then yes, was it yesterday, had a mattress blocking the sidewalk.
Okay.
And I went, I don't want bedbugs or anything on, you know, so we have to run the road.
They're on the sidewalk, you have a wheelchair or handicap that I could buy, so it's already a problem.
Yeah, so that's it, and then, um, Safeway, do you guys get any calls at Safeway regarding, you know, the people that drive there, they don't stop?
Pulling in or pulling out? Or inside the parking lot?
When they're coming into Safeway, you know, I had to take pictures of so many cars and, you know, the license plate. And one girl was on the cell phone and, um, Ariola actually came for that call. Yeah, so he said, oh, good thing you got the photo and, you know, the license plate number of that car, because she was on her cell phone and didn't see us.
Okay, we can check that, I'm not sure on the calls, I didn't check that one, but I, I know Officer Ariola's good.
Yeah, because I called their property management company, but they don't answer their phones.
There's a lot of, I can't explain that, but we can work on the stop sign.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Okay. Okay, any further questions for the police? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. Okay, next up, Board of Water Supply, Michelle Harmon.
Aloha, everybody, yep, Michelle Harmon here, your Board of Water Supply rep. Sorry, I'm at another event, so my camera is off. Um, this month's main break report, I have a four-inch pipe at twenty-three forty-five Manalaha Road. And we had that, um, main break happen on March tenth, and the install date is unknown. For the general water announcements, I have two this month. So one is we have our detect a leak week this, this month from April first to the nineteenth. Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, that's not the, um, so it's happening the thirteenth through the nineteenth. And we ask everybody to chase down pesky leaks in their homes during this time. Um, we also have two community events, one on Saturday, April thirteenth at Pearl Ridge Center near Macy's from eleven-thirty AM to one-thirty PM. Our closing event is Friday, April nineteenth at Kahala Mall from eleven AM to one PM, and that's at Center Court. If you stop by, we have prizes, tips, leak detection tablets, interactive activities, and Board of Water Supply prizes. Uh, our second announcement is that the city and county of Honolulu has launched the HNL Alert, a new mass notification system that provides residents and visitors information about severe weather, emergencies, and other situations affecting city services via text, push notifications, or email. HNL Alert replaces the city's current hnl.info notification system. There's two ways to get those alerts, one is to create a count at, at hnlalert.gov. And then the other way to get the notifications is to text H-N-L-A-L-E-R-T, so HNL Alert, to eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven-seven. And then you don't need to register for an account, you just get the alerts. For more information, you can go to honolulu.gov/dem. And that's all that I have for you this month, and I'm happy to take any questions. Mahalo.
Okay, starting with any questions from the board? Claire?
Hi, thank you, Michelle. Just yesterday on my walk where I find out everything, uh, Board of Water Supply was trying to fix some sort of a leak on the, in the road outside of Stevenson School. Did you know anything about that? Then they went further up the hill to that four-way intersection up there. Trying to find what was going on, the source of the leak. They said something about an investigation had to be done, whose water leak it was, but do you have any information about that?
Uh, no, I'm sorry that I don't at this time. We usually, um, get the alerts for the previous month and report them, you know, so for March, I report them in April. But I can get those information details to you and then email you and chair if you'd like that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, happy to help.
Okay, and seeing no further questions from board members, are there any questions from attendees? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Mahalo, everyone, have a good night.
Okay, I'll quickly circle back to see if anyone is here from Honolulu Fire Department. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and, uh, Mayor Rick Bongiardi's representative, Megan Johnson.
Good evening, Megan Johnson, Deputy Director for the Department of Customer Services. Um, I'm gonna start off with, um, providing some information, um, from the mayor's newsletter, but before I do that, I just wanted to check, I believe that, um, the Housing Director, Kevin Augé, is, is he there? Kevin?
I don't see him in person.
Okay, um, because he, um, let me know that he was going to try to stop by this evening to provide some information and answer questions about what to expect, with the development that they're planning to begin at fourteen-twenty-one Pensacola. Um, so anyhow, if, if he does happen to, to show up, I can pause and, and let him, um, provide some information. But in the meantime, um, my first announcement is just to let everyone know that, um, Mayor Bongiardi and his cabinet, that, um, we've begun the twenty-twenty-five Town Hall, um, meeting across the, um, the island. And just to let you folks know, the, the one that would be closest to, um, this district would be, it's gonna be the last Town Hall meeting, so it's gonna be on June fifth at seven PM at Kalani High School Cafeteria, and this is for Manoa, Waikiki, Hawaii Kai, Kahala, and East Honolulu. So again, that's June fifth, seven PM, Kalani High School Cafeteria. And, um, just another, um, couple of things from highlights from the mayor's newsletter this past month is that the Neil Blaisdell Center Concert Hall is reopening. And also, um, wanted to put in a pitch for the Department of Parks and Recreation that they're beginning their annual hire to push for the city's summer fund program. So if anybody knows people who may be interested and available, please encourage them to, um, look at the Department of Parks and Recreation website for information about, um, the city's summer fund program. And I'm, I'm just gonna go ahead now and, um, provide some responses to questions that were posed at the March meeting. So the first, um, response has to do with questions of what can the city and DPP do to encourage or require developers to present information to and work with community before construction starts, and specifically requesting that DPP, a city and DPP assess how Bill Seven is being implemented, for example, addressing management of project controls, monitoring, and ongoing vetting process to determine what needs to be adjusted before building any further units. And, um, a related question is why do Bill Seven projects not offer parking for all residents? So it was a lot of things dealing with, um, Bill Seven. So in response to this, the Department of, um, Planning and Permitting, DPP, and they responded that revised ordinances of Hawaii Chapter Thirty-two, which is also Bill Seven projects, do not require any public inputs. Bill Seven projects are basically ministerial building permits. This was reinforced when Chapter Thirty-two was modified, that special district permits were not required for most Chapter Thirty-two projects. The DPP recognizes that it is good practice for developers to bring their projects before neighborhood boards and stakeholders for feedback. Additionally, the neighborhood board can request that the Bill Seven developer provide a presentation on the project, although they are not required to provide a project. Um, to determine whether an assessment is needed, um, I'm being asked to please provide specific examples of any concerns regarding, you know, concerns that you have with management or lack of controls or vetting, so if, um, after my presentation, if, if people can provide some specific examples, I can relay that back to DPP. And then with respect to parking, um, parking is not required for Chapter Thirty-two projects. Parking is expensive to construct and maintain and can reduce the ability of projects to provide housing to families. Furthermore, parking structures as podiums or the base of buildings may have undesirable impacts such as additional project height, bulk, and view shed impacts. Inducing, I'm sorry, inducing additional traffic, noise, and odors, and otherwise discouraging more sustainable options of transportation in areas that may be walkable or have good access to bus and bicycle infrastructure. Instead of requiring a set amount of parking, Chapter Thirty-two encourages developers to build as much parking as their residents will need, which may result in less than one parking space per unit. Particularly in transit-rich areas, car ownership rates indicate that there is a market for lower rents when parking is not provided for people and families without cars. Does anybody have specific questions about what the information that I just shared?
Okay, uh, we'll start with Ian Harris then Steel Quiz.
There's a lot of hands, so, yeah, there's a lot of hands, I'll try to be, uh, quick with this one. Thank you very much, I think you really substantively responded to the question, I appreciate that. One thing that stood out to me was the notion of transit-rich areas. Um, I think for the most part, you know, Makiki, Lower Punchbowl, um, not so much Tannalas, but most of our board area is quite blessed and transit-rich. But our board has brought specific concerns related to locations that very specifically don't have good transportation options, good additional street parking options. So both parking on the street and busing is not very good. So I'd like it if you could, uh, either answer now or get back to us on how the definition of transit-rich area, um, what, what sort of definition is used on this, and is it more inclusive of entire neighborhoods, which we certainly have a lot, Makiki and Lower Punchbowl? Or is it noticing the immediate several blocks around a project? Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, I will, I will certainly get a response to that question, I'm not able to answer that at this time, but I will, um, get a response to that, thank you.
Harris.
Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Johnson, uh, you know, at the last meeting, you're, you're here present at the meeting, and I think one of the, the key focal points of the objections that we had of Bill Seven is, uh, once it's built, is really the negative impact that it has on the residents and the community surrounding that development. And I know that we went around and around on that, and so, um, that's the main, uh, issue of Bill Seven is the ability to, um, be able to monitor the, these developments in terms of what, what impact they bring. We just had HPD report and, and Rich Kaz actually came up to thank HPD. But I would imagine that with the statistics of HPD and their monitoring of that development at fourteen-twenty-seven Ernest Street, I think there's a lot that comes, uh, in terms of the impact, uh, to that residential area. So I, I hope that, uh, at the next meeting, there'll be some follow-up on that, on that issue of Bill Seven, thank you.
Okay, I saw Claire online with her hand up, so Chuck and, oh, sorry, Steel Quiz, then Chuck, then Claire, Steel Quiz.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Bill Seven is really a disaster. It says, if we give junk housing with no support and we charge a lot for it, it's okay. We have all the building codes doing this, that, and the other, and it seems to be, oh, well, the Bill's Chapter Seven, they don't have to do anything. And it's not the people that are there when you get money made, the developer takes the money and goes home. The people that have to live in the neighborhood that's junk, uh, don't have recourse. It's a way to get around the building codes, uh, and make money, but not for the people.
Chuck.
Uh, yes, um, Megan, I wanted to, uh, thank you so much for, um, getting us this information on fourteen-twenty-one. I, I mean, I looked at it and I was totally impressed and was only hoping that this can apply to Bill Seven, because this is pretty much, uh, what we were looking for as far as the major items. The other thing I wanted to mention was piggybacking off of what Harris just mentioned about the negative impacts that these Bill Seven projects, um, bring to our community. On Pensacola right now, we have Pensimetra down at the, uh, corner of Lunalelo and Pensacola, that's twenty-nine units. It has four parking stalls, okay? Fourteen-twenty-one has yet to be determined. I'm not sure if you can tell me if that's a Bill Seven, or it looks more way different than a Bill Seven, I think. But the one that's really concerning is the, the project that's coming up on Wilder and Key, um, Wilder and Pensacola. We don't know anything about that, except that it's gonna be pretty massive. So we got three projects on Pensacola within two blocks, one or two blocks of each other. And already we're stressed for parking, so that's a big concern, and, um, of course, the concerns that were brought to, um, people's attention about fourteen-twenty-seven and their tenants. Thank you.
Okay, Claire?
Okay, thank you, Megan. Um, I'm in line with everyone else's presentation here. I would like to know specifically how one qualifies the property for Bill Seven, because it seems at least one, and we've spoken to you about the sixteen-seventeen alapai. Does not comply with the spirit and intent of Bill Seven in any way, shape, or form, and is in fact being built so that in fifteen years, this developer can sell at a profit each unit. This is not the spirit or intent of Bill Seven to knock down houses, and he is renting out five out of the six property apartments. So, um, he's profiting off of it already. He's gonna knock all that down to put up fifty-three units and four parking stalls. And, um, you know, in addition to all these other massive developments going on, why are we allowing the city to be choked off like this? This is just not tenable, and I'd like to know the specific criteria to apply under Bill Seven, because it seems like carte blanche. The developers can do what they want, just say Bill Seven, and DPP says I have to follow the mayor's agenda. Well, the mayor's supposed to be following our agenda. And Bill Seven done deal. It's like a broken record already. So I would like more specific info on how these properties qualify for Bill Seven to begin with. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions from the board, I'll go ahead and take questions from attendees. So I see online, Michelle Luke.
Thank you very much, board. And thank you for being here on behalf of the mayor. I have grave concern based on the comments that you've made, speaking on behalf of the mayor. The first is that you've characterized Bill Seven as a process which is essentially ministerial permitting, which is worse than what we've heard before, which is billed as a matter of right. DPP is tasked, as part of their review, even for Bill Seven projects, with looking to the suitability of the project for its location, considering amongst other things, community character. The idea that the mayor treats these projects as ministerial permits is concerning, because that overriding value for the community is being obviously overlooked. And that is not even what Bill Seven intended. It is not consistent if that is the directive from the mayor with the urban core plan even that was reviewed at the end of last year and the beginning of this year. So again, if the, there's an appreciation for affordable housing. The mayor needs to realize Bill Seven is missing its mark. It is not providing the type of housing that our community needs. It is building micro-units that nobody wants to live in. And it's ruining the communities in which they are built for the only benefit of the developer. So these factors that DPP is supposed to be looking at and clearly is just rubber stamping is a concern. Secondly, with regard to the sixteen seventeen Ala Pae project in particular, that was initially two lots that were combined under a conditional use permit that required, based on the architectural drawing, a certain number of parking stalls. Even though Bill Seven doesn't require it, once you get a CUP and it's based on a plan that incorporates parking, you can't take it away, which is what the developer has recently done. To ensure that the CUP restrictions are actually followed. DPP doesn't seem to be following that. And again, that is not something that's discretionary. Once the CUP is awarded, the developer has to comply with it. So where is the oversight? This is a huge concern. And to the extent you're able to answer, I'd like you to answer no.
I appreciate the question. I am not able to answer right now, but I am documenting extensive notes. And I will get you a response by the next meeting.
Thank you.
And actually, Ms. Luke, I wanted to say to you that relatedly, I know that yourself and a number of other community members had mentioned, expressed this frustration and concern at the last meeting that you had requested meetings, audience with the mayor's office. And so I also conveyed that too and just was trying to follow up. Again, I don't know, I have a number of, you know, names of people who had mentioned that they had tried to make requests to meet with the mayor's office to discuss Bill Seven and that you folks had not received responses. And so I conveyed that to the mayor's office and the response that I got back is to please email the mayor's office, which I mean, you may have already done, but mayor@honolulu.gov to follow up on any prior being requests. I didn't have copies of, you know, any of the requests, but then if there's anything else that I can do to help to follow up with that. But essentially, I was advised to for you folks to follow up on your earlier request by sending a mail to the mayor's office.
Thank you.
All right, are there any further concerns or questions for the mayor's representative?
I have other updates, but if there's other concerns about this specific topic, I just wanted, I didn't want people to forget what I was saying. You folks had a number of issues, so this is number one of like six things. But actually, you know, if there aren't questions on this, I just want to check, is is the housing director there? No? Okay.
No.
Okay. Any other questions on Bill Seven for now or comments?
Yep, we have one.
Okay.
Rich Kaz, so I kind of missed the beginning part, but on the Bill Seven, were you folks looking at how you guys are calculating the footage versus the cost? So, you know, with that fourteen twenty-seven property, the units are like two hundred and thirty-three square feet, no parking, and they're costing fifteen fifty for rent, which doesn't seem to be desirable. So now they're putting in Section Eight people, and I just wanted to see if that's, how does that calculate with the neighborhood? What area? And what, how are you guys coming up with that price for the Bill Seven for all the other units as well?
I'm not able to answer the question at this time, but I will try to get that information and a response at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further questions. Oh, sorry, John.
Yeah, one other thing. You need to have in Bill Seven, a sustainability clause that the developer shows how this can be sustained over a period of time. Because again, it's very small apartments, nobody has, they end up tearing them down in about five years. So if it doesn't make economic sense, except for money for the developer, that's not good for the community.
Okay. Any further questions, comments on Bill Seven? Sam?
One thing that's now, one thing that's not talked about so far is transportation. You know, we talked about buses and we have bikes. And our, since we're building all these new condos in the area, you would think that they would review that. And that would be like one of the first things that they would talk about is where are these missing areas? How close are they? Is, does the mayor and his staff have they looked at that? Have they looked at the, you know, how they can improve the things since they know these people are not gonna have cars? What are they gonna use to go to work? So that, that's something that needs to be looked at.
Okay, in the interest of time, cut off further questions and allow the mayor's rep to continue with her report.
Okay, I'm gonna try to go very quickly, but this is just more, hopefully this will go quickly. So one thing is there was a request about no parking, red striping on Pensacola Streets. I think it was, or remember, Lee had asked DTS to follow up on a prior request to add red striping in no parking zones and bus stop areas on Pensacola Street. So the, so DTS did say that a work order will be issued by the end of this month of April twenty twenty-five to repaint the faded red curbs that delineate the following Pensacola Street bus stops. So bus stop number three oh nine, which is at Pensacola Street and Wilder Avenue. Bus stop number three ten, which is Pensacola and then opposite Haysinger Streets. And then bus stop number three eleven, which is at Pensacola and Luna Lilo Streets. So three nine, three ten, three eleven. I hope that those are the bus stops that you folks were concerned about. Yes? Okay, next, there was also a comment about a no parking sign being obscured at Akala Lane. I believe it was Chair Char had asked DTS to check on the no parking sign. And so the Department of Transportation Services will investigate the obscured no parking signs. And I will update the board on the status of the investigation once it's completed. So hopefully by the next meeting. Next, I wanted to follow up. I think it was member Steel Quiz had asked a question about, I had reported that the Oahu had earned bicycle-friendly recognition. And I had mentioned that we had received Silver Level status, and I was asked what that meant. So in January twenty twenty-five, the League of American Bicyclists designated the city and county of Honolulu as a Silver Level Bicycle Friendly Community for the period of twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight. Prior to this, the city was identified as a Bronze Level since twenty fourteen. And in twenty twenty-four, the state of Hawaii ranked number twenty-five out of fifty-one, so fifty states plus District of Columbia, for bicycle-friendly state ranking. So that was as much information as I was able to provide. I also was trying to do some research too on the websites. Yeah, I I hope that answers the question. And then finally, I had some questions about the Makiki Stream. When will the city clean up debris and mattresses in Makiki Stream? So I have different follow-up from different departments. So HPD, District One, Central Honolulu, bicycle detail officers have been working closely with the Department of Facility Maintenance, so DFM, on conducting stored property ordinance enforcement and cleanup operation once a month within the Makiki Stream area near Nehua Streets. And on March fourteenth, the bicycle detail officers conducted an enforcement operation and they cleaned trash and debris. And during the, during the cleanup, it was reported that the stream was clear of individuals. And so HPD said that their officers will continue to make checks and schedule another stored property ordinance cleanup with DFM in the coming weeks. And then the Department of Community Services, they are also kind of working with Department of Facilities Maintenance, the Road Division, who feels calls and complaints. And they act upon these complaints. So I was told that the Department of Community Services was going to observe Makiki Stream the week of maybe the ending of April. And then once identified, the homeless people will be visited by their provider network for possible shelter placements. And then similarly, I got another response from the Department of Facilities Maintenance saying that the maintenance of Makiki Stream is scheduled to commence on April twenty-fourth. Again, in connection with the Stored Property Ordinance Branch and with HPD assistance. And it says debris in the stream below King Street will be removed and disposed of, and vegetation overgrowth will be cut and removed. And that the Stored Property Ordinance and Sidewalk Nuisance Ordinance Enforcement is conducted on a complaint basis and is coordinated between the Department of Facility Maintenance and HPD for street sidewalk and stream areas. Enforcement at park facilities typically are performed as park rules enforcement and are coordinated with Department of Parks and Recreation staff to ensure proper cleanup at park facilities after enforcement actions are taken. And the Department of Facilities Maintenance has had coordination meetings with the Director of Homeless Solutions, Roy Mayhira, to improve effectiveness of actions to provide improved housing solutions for houseless populations. So I know that was a lot of information, but I was trying to just, there's a lot of different departments that are involved, HPD, Department of Facilities Maintenance, Department of Community Services. So that was comments from all separate parties. Does anyone have any questions about any of those matters?
Okay, questions, since we oh, we'll take it.
Thank you so much for the update about the cleaning of the Makiki Stream. You know, this board passed a resolution back in, I believe, November, if not October, related to this specific issue. And, you know, we definitely encourage supplying of social services during the cleaning, but this is certainly a problem area that we highlighted as urgently needed for some sort of action. I wanted to inquire as to whether or not there would be any on Leho Leho Street, the Kanaha Stream, for example, which we also highlighted as a place having pretty much the same concerns as the part of the stream below South King Street. Thank you very much.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, seeing none? Did you have any, anything further, Megan?
No, I just, if anybody has any questions, if not, thank you for your time.
Oh, sorry, were you able to hear? Okay, she, okay, you heard Ian. Okay. With that, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And then next up, we have Councilmember Scott Nishimoto.
Aloha, chair and board. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to share an update with Councilmember Nishimoto. We recently hosted the Easter egg hunt this past weekend with Chair Baladi. So we're really grateful for the community members for coming out. Otherwise, from my boss's and as far as Bill Seven projects go, he is drafting a bill, and I think it just got drafted where it requires onsite resident managers for these. So he's planning on introducing that soon. And then I've been seeing some of the correspondence going around with the, in regards to the Makiki Park. And I also saw the coverage on that. So my boss, he is proposing in his budget amendments that are happening right now, he put in funding for Makiki Park fencing. But these are proposed budget amendments. But yeah, I'm happy to take anything back to my boss and see if we can address anything.
Okay, starting with questions from the board, and we have John Steel Quiz.
Yeah, is he in favor of Chapter Seven or does he oppose it?
Uh, sorry, does he stand for Bill Seven?
Seven and all the damage it's causing, or is he okay with it?
Which chapter seven?
Sorry, he's referring to the Bill Seven.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry, I can't speak on behalf of my boss, but you know, he is aware that there has been some problems with that, at least like the ongoing. You know, we have quite a few Bill Seven projects in our district. So, you know, Scott wants to stay on top of these and make sure that there's a little, there's more, you know, just, yeah, something like a resident, you know, property on-site manager. He's looking into different ways to regulate these Bill Seven projects and make sure the tenants are, you know, are good, good tenants. So that seems to be like the ongoing problem that we've seen a lot with different projects across our community.
Okay, next, Chuck.
Thank you for that update on Councilman Nishimoto's bill. I just wanted to ask, and I believe we spoke to him about this at one of the meetings that we had at fourteen twenty-seven. But is there any possibility that he could introduce with that bill a clause that says that they need to have some kind of presentation to the neighborhood board or community group before the project actually gets going?
Okay, yeah, I'll bring this to his attention. I think that's a good idea. So I'll share this with my boss.
Okay, any further questions from the board? Okay, any further questions from the board? Nope. Okay, seeing one, uh, oh, Sam.
One of the things we brought up before was security for these buildings that are coming up. And, uh, one of the things that would be good would be to have a, like an ombudsman that represented all these different, uh, locations. So they could, somebody to talk to when they have problems in, in that building. Uh, I think that would be something to look into.
Do you mean like a representative for all Bill Seven projects?
All the, all Bill Seven buildings.
Oh, uh, I mean, it, I can ask my boss about that, but yeah, typically those have always been, um, self-governed for many reasons, but, um, and a lot of the funding is done through different means, so it may be quite difficult for just one representative um, to represent all those seven projects. But I mean, I can, I can ask my boss to see what he thinks.
Okay, uh, seeing no further questions from board members, I'll indulge myself in one. Uh, so, uh, we were fortunate enough to get a communication from Nate Sirota. I hope I'm pronouncing that right, uh, about, uh, the fencing around the community gardens. And he also said that they're moving forward with the, to fence around the Punaho square to get a dog park started. Would that happen to be in the budget? I don't think you have the answer to that now, so I guess that's for, question for, yeah, next one, for next time, if you don't mind checking into that.
Okay, uh, cause he, he said that there is gonna be, they're looking into that already, or?
Uh, yeah, he, he was, uh, the email said, uh, they're hoping to lump together putting up the fence at the community gardens with, uh, putting up the fence around Punaho Gardens to create a dog, uh, off-leash dog park.
Oh, okay, yeah, I mean, my boss is very supportive of dog parks. He's really wants to, like, that's one of his things that he wants to kind of focus on is bringing more dog parks. But I'm not sure if they can lump it together if it's not on the same property, but I mean, I'll at least look into it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Oh, John.
On, on the dog park, uh, you're going to need to have a, a, a path between the two sides. Is it, is it, there's a, there's a trail that goes down through the middle, I'll have to use that. So you're gonna, it's gonna have to be a dog park with a overpass or something, because, uh, otherwise the dog is gonna get out.
Oh, I, I'm not too sure. I mean, typically when they do these dog parks, they have a whole, like, you know, site management where they have to do their studies on the area. So we, we leave that up to the experts. But, um, yeah, once, hopefully we can actually get a dog park, that'd be great.
Okay, uh, seeing no further questions from the board, uh, we'll take questions from attendees, starting with Michelle.
Hi again, thank you, Chair. Um, following up on, um, the involvement of the board on these projects, uh, Bill Seven projects, I think it would be a good amendment, and, and I appreciate, um, the effort to change Bill Seven, um, to require onsite resident managers. That's, uh, a good, I think, plus for those buildings that are ready in existence. For those that are not, one of the issues which I would like the council member to consider is, uh, in spite of Bill, Bill Seven's exclusion for neighborhood approval and for community engagement, I would like to see that amended, uh, and that's because we have seen uh, over and over again, problems in trying to have a dialogue with the developers. Um, I, I know that this particular board has invited, uh, for instance, Mr. Lamb to try to address some of the community concerns. And he has, for whatever reason, felt it unnecessary. Um, but, but that is, you know, why the neighborhood board is spending so much time listening to community concerns that are repeated over and over and over and over again. Because those issues need, uh, the engagement of the developer to resolve. And so I, I would ask that, um, you also consider in amending, um, or proposing amendments to the bill, um, the requirement that the developer engage at the neighborhood board level with the community.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, so yeah, that sounds like, I'll definitely bring that up with my boss to see if that's something possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
No problem. Okay, any further questions from attendees? Okay. If you could just give us your name, thank you very much.
Um, I have a question about the dog park at Punaho, Punaho, was that Punaho Gardens? Okay, there's a, there's a homeless problem there at the bus stop. I've driven past that place numerous times. Police came out, cleaned it up, and there's another homeless, like, some people camp out on the entrance to, uh, the freeway at, off of Punaho, right past uh, Marano, and there's usually somebody sleeping there too. So I'd like to, um, let's see what we can do about the homeless problem there, because they're taking over. I think there's somebody there now. Um, so that's all I gotta say.
Okay, that's the bus stop on the corner of Punaho and Wilder, correct? Sorry, just wanna clarify.
Bus stop at Punaho and Wilder.
Okay, yeah, I, I'll put in a riser on that specific bus stop. I mean, I live in the area, so I do see that, that one. Although I have seen different groups, so it's very little more transient groups, but, um, yeah, I'll put in a riser on that one.
Okay, seeing no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have, uh, Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam. I see, Robin.
Hey, guys. Hi, so, um, I put our newsletter in the chat for this month. And, um, I don't know if this was already reported on by HPD. I came in a little delayed with family stuff. But, um, we received an update. I know Claire Santos and a couple other board members and probably community members were concerned about the five-way stop at Prospect Eulani, um, Alapi. And we, uh, engaged with Captain Roberts recently. I know Curtis reached out to us. And they were able to let us know that, um, as they've reiterated to us, that whenever they are present at the stop, people make full stops. So I know, uh, there's been reporting that people blast through the, the stop signs. But when they have their lights on, people stop. So, um, I know, um, that they're gonna monitor the area more closely in the next couple of weeks. And, um, we're, we're just gonna stay on it, have communication between HPD and our office. Um, but I know there's conversations of possibly like a beanabout, a roundabout in that area. It's just a matter of funding and then working with DTS. So we've reached out to their office and, um, hopefully we can get a conversation started on other options as an alternative to the five-way stop. Um, and that is it. Everyone.
Okay, uh, starting with questions from the board, uh, we'll do Claire, then Harris, then Steel Quiz. So Claire.
Thank you, Robin, nice to see you. Um, I did ask HPD at last month's NB meeting, I asked HPD to monitor their, we know they can't be invisible at this five-way intersection. But they did just report this morning, I mean, I mean, in the beginning of the meeting tonight, that they have issued in the past month, since I asked them, they have issued twenty-two citations, most of them running the stop sign. And as we were, as you were speaking, my neighbor texted me, I heard a wolf outside. My neighbor texted me and said, HPD just got another stop sign runner. So while we're talking, somebody just ran a stop sign. So it is a problem intersection, and I did write to Tyler Dos Santos Tam. As you know, I, I've been emailing with him that we want to, a better solution. Yes, uh, for, for our safety. And twenty-two citations does bear out that there is a problem and the, the stop signs aren't the cure. So hopefully, you know, it's gonna take time, I'm sure, but let's get some meaningful dialogue going on a better solution. Because pedestrian-wise, it's a very treacherous. Once people come up Eulani, that stop sign is set so far back, the driver can't see over the rise, and then they come right at you. And I almost got nailed twice this week, so, um, let's look towards better solutions now. We tried the stop sign thing and predictably, it's not the best solution. So let's move forward. Thank you so much, Robin.
Okay, Harris?
Good evening, Robin.
Hi, Harris.
First of all, I, um, if you could just send, uh, a thank you to, uh, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam in terms of his stand, in terms of the, uh, sewer rate hikes.
Yes.
And, uh, and really advocating for our, the residents and, uh, really, uh, focusing on, on the impact that that would have. So please, uh, thank him. Um, also, um, I know that Taylor, uh, shared a little bit about some of the efforts Councilmember, uh, Nishimoto is doing on Bill Seven. Uh, wanted to, uh, uh, at least give a heads up to both council members, Dos Santos Tam, as well as, uh, Nishimoto, that, uh, our Nice Neighborhoods Committee, as an ongoing follow-up, uh, we're able to have a meeting with Councilmember Matt Wire. He oversees the Housing Committee. So we're meeting with him on May thirteenth at one P M to continue to share our concerns about Bill Seven. And hopefully that will intersect with some of the other items, uh, in terms of discussion, uh, at the City Council. And I know that, uh, Chair Nate, Nathan Char, as well as, uh, uh, Board Member Chuck Lee, as well as Board Member, uh, Claire, uh, Santos will be joining us, uh, to have that meeting. So just wanted to, uh, make sure that, uh, we're gonna keep, keep, uh, keep addressing it as much as we can to, uh, keep that focus.
Sounds good. I'll let Councilmember know. Thank you, Harris.
Okay, John?
Uh, does Cosmo Dos Santos, uh, oppose Chapter Seven, or do you support, or what's his position on it?
Thank you for the question. Um, similar, similarly to Taylor, I cannot directly speak to my boss's stance. However, um, he understands that there, as the board has stated, there's a need for housing, affordable housing, uh, but it's just balancing, uh, the community need with the surrounding existing community, um, and quite creating equity and, um, making sure that residents are, feel safe, but are housed. So, um, yes, Councilmember is aware of the, the issues. And hopefully, um, I know with Harris saying that he has a meeting with Matt Wire and with, um, Scott working on amendments, um, requiring resident managers, onsite resident managers. Hopefully, there's, there can be more momentum behind, um, improving, um, uh, the chapter. Yeah, definitely Bill Seven projects. Yeah.
So what is his position? Does he oppose it or approve it?
Uh, the, the idea in general of creating, um, housing, he's not opposed, he's not opposed to creating them.
Well, housing is great.
John, thank you. I apologize, John. Okay, uh, any further questions from board members? Seeing none, are there any questions or concerns from, okay, if you could come up and give us your name again?
Hi, my name is Richard Ching. I drive up and down Eulani almost every day. Um, the five-way stop doesn't affect me too much. The, the thing that affects me is that there's no parking signs from Eulani, I mean, from the top of the hill all the way down to Queen Emma on the Makai side. And there's cars parked there every day. It's all like, and there's abandoned cars there, and I brought it up before. And I've seen some action going on, but there's still tons of parking. I mean, if it's a no parking zone, then, you know, everybody should, there should get ticketed. If there's gonna be an, uh, parking available, you should take all the signs down. I mean, one way or the other, you guys need to fig, fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Well, we can reach out to HPD for that again. Chase an issue. Yeah.
Okay, any, uh, Michelle, is your hand up?
Michelle. Hello.
Hi, sorry, um, my, my, uh, and you know, Robin, that we did meet with Tyler quite some time ago, um, to express our concerns on Bill Seven. Um, the, I think the general response was, you know, these are, uh, billed as a matter-of-right projects, which we disagreed with. Um, so my, my direct question is, given that there have been a number of concerns and sort of a, um, uprising, um, from various, uh, parts of the community about Bill Seven projects and some effort to, um, modify the bill and to improve on the effort to achieve the goal of affordable housing, are there any amendments that Tyler is proposing? Or will be proposing?
We have a kind of a working draft that our staff is, is working on. There's nothing concrete yet. Um, but we are in the, in the process of trying to introduce something. Right now, a lot of our energy is focused on the budget. Um, but that is coming. That is something that we will, um, introduce sometime this year. Yeah.
Okay, are you able to share just generally what the subject matter of the possible changes are?
Not, not at the moment, but as soon as I can, I will share it with the board, and I will share it with you, yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, and now, uh, we'll take up, uh, any community concerns from residents. Uh, they are limited to two minutes each. Are there any community concerns? Okay. And as ever, if you can give us your name.
Rich, guys. So, um, I'll make it two minutes. Uh, basically, I think, uh, Michelle Luke, uh, really followed up on exactly what I was thinking and, and some of the neighbors about this Bill Seven and being able to, uh, put the developer on check, and at, at least getting him here, talking to us, talking to the neighbors. Uh, at least, uh, be a good neighbor, good steward of his buildings that he's actually, uh, putting up in his several, in the same neighborhood. And if he's not coming here and being part of our solution and, and helping us move, why are we continuing to let him continue to build? And, you know, look at pausing and, and trying to figure out why there's so much problems. I think the biggest thing was, you know, putting a resident manager in the property would be, uh, a good start. But we've been having major issues this last, past week, uh, week and a half of, uh, um, m- many things of domestics. I mean, I, i- i- if I could play what's going on, but it's probably not for this, uh, audience. But, um, you know, with another, uh, person getting really high there and then coming across the street and peeing right in front of the properties and, you know, just blatantly during the daytime. So there's a lot of issues. And I think that, uh, having a resident manager would definitely help. But I think Michelle meant, you know, hit it right on the nose about, you know, getting the developer to really be part of our solution to help us, uh, you know, make some changes. And if not, then pause what he's doing so that we can actually look at these problems. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, are there any further community concerns? Ian?
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, two quick updates. The Macaulay Moililiy neighborhood board is actively discussing the Makiki Stream resolution we brought up. Uh, it has been taken back, uh, for some consideration on languages, um, by some of the members. And I've been working with residents and trying to coordinate with them, um, to find a resolution that will be able to pass. Uh, Chair Morganley recommended I attend the next meeting to describe the wording and the intention behind the resolution. Again, the resolution calls for state and state agencies and city agencies to conduct cleanups, water testing, enforce no trespassing, and increase outreach to the unhoused, to make sure they get all the social services. water testing, enforce no trespassing, and increase outreach to the unhoused to make sure they get all the social services, know about those and the different housing options. Additionally, the legislature considered a bill and a resolution related to this this session. Unfortunately, neither received a hearing. Uh, issue number two separately, uh, Chair Nathan Char, myself, uh, we worked together on a formal request to the Neighborhood Commission on April fourteenth, asking for a temporary restructuring of this neighborhood board. Very simply, the board has only met quorum once since October twenty twenty-four, uh, with the possible exception of tonight. With only eleven of our seventeen, uh, seats filled, we, we need to have almost everyone here in order to even consider a resolution, let alone pass anything. Uh, to address this, the letter, uh, that I worked with Chair Char on asked to merge the board's sub-districts into a single at-large district and reduce the members to thirteen just for the remainder of the session through July. So after the next election, which will have more members on, it would fully reset at that point. Though I might, uh, recommend the board consider if it's time to consider, um, re-situating our board to avoid these things in the future. Uh, the commission will be reviewing this April twenty-eighth, so with any luck, we'll have no quorum issues for the last two board meetings of this, uh, of our session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ian. Uh, are there any further community concerns? Okay, oh, yep, if you could come up and give us your name?
Uh, my name is Richard Ching. Um, the Makiki, uh, Stream Initiative. I'd like to know what the scope is and as far as, uh, how far up is it gonna go? Cause all the feeders, all the feeder streams, they got people in it. I see people popping out of the bridges, out of the, from underneath the bridges every day. Um, I drive past La One on Nehoa and Makiki Street. There's people popping in. I don't like when ladies go over there, sit down. I'm afraid they're gonna get yanked into their stream. Um, so I'd like to know what the extent is, if it's gonna go all the way up to the mountain, or if it's just gonna go, you know, so far. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give you a brief moment to.
If you'd like to come over here, I'll forward the resolution this board recently passed. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no further community concerns, uh, we'll go ahead to board business and presentations. Excuse me. Starting with filling four vacant seats in Sub District One and two vacant seats in Sub District Two. Do we have anyone interested in filling any of our vacancies?
Does anyone wanna be a board?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
What happened?
Right outside.
A border.
Okay, do we have any further interest? Bronson, you're running. Would you like to serve the appointment of the board?
Oh, yeah.
And he's definitely confirmed. Yeah.
Okay, do we have a nomination for Bronson Silva to be appointed to the board?
Chair, I'd be honored. Oh, sorry. It looks like I got beat to it. Do you need a second? Okay, well, you got it.
Okay. Would you like to give a quick word before we take our vote?
Hello, folks. Uh, my name is Bronson Silva. Uh, I live on, uh, Lihoe Lihoe Street, so just a few blocks away from here. Um, and I am a candidate, uh, for the upcoming election and, uh, with, uh, encouragement of a few board members, um, I've been asked to step up and, and serve my community. Previously, I served on the Manoa Neighborhood Board, uh, as its secretary. Uh, I did one term there. Um, so looking to get back involved with my community and get engaged. A little bit about myself, I'm from Hilo, um, Oi, but, uh, I'm also, uh, a, a labor union guy, so thank you, Sam, for, for your nomination from another union guy. Uh, and I look forward to serving, um, if confirmed. Thank you.
Okay, uh. Oh, is there any discussion? Ian?
Um, Chair, could you clarify how much, uh, members we have tonight? Is it nine? Okay, uh, I just wanna highlight to the board, uh, I can vouch for him, but also we desperately need to have more members on the board, uh, for this evening if we wanna consider business, and I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ian. Okay, and. Okay.
All right, per the neighborhood plan, we're doing a roll call vote. Um, seeing that Bronson Silva is the only, uh, nominee for a vacant seat in Sub District Two. If you'd like for, uh, Bronson Silva to fill the vac, one of two vacant seats in Sub District Two, uh, just say Silva. If you're abstaining or no vote, please indicate that as well. Uh, starting with, uh, Char.
Silva.
Silva. Koano, absent. Lakalaka, absent. Lee.
Silva.
Silva. Mitchell. Silva. Nakamoto. Silva. Peck.
Silva.
Silva. Ross. Silva. Salasa. Silva. Santos.
Silva.
Silva. Steelquist. Silva. Uh, with nine votes, uh, congratulations, uh, you're now a member of the board.
Take a quick recess to swear in?
Yes.
Okay, I'll give, I'll take a quick recess to swear Bronson in.
She's one street, oh. So she's what? What neighborhood voice?
Uh, China, downtown Chinatown.
Oh, wow. So she's at the edge of. He's good.
Yeah, it would have been, would have been great. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay, much. There's only two of us.
When is the election sign?
Uh, it's, it come, yeah, uh, April twenty-fifth is when you get our, is when you should have our, yeah. Okay, next one. Right, thank you.
Okay, I'll back, back out of recess? Okay, uh, I don't think I saw any further, um, interest in filling vacancies. We'll move on to approval of written summaries for video record of Thursday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thursday, February twenty, twenty twenty-five, and Thursday, March twenty twenty-five. Uh, can we take this all together or? Are there any corrections? Okay, okay, seeing none, they'll be adopted as written. Thank you very much. We have our minutes. Okay, uh, now for the fun business, uh, starting with the Resolution for Support of Establishing an Empty Homes Tax in Honolulu. There has been extensive, we've talked about this pretty extensively already, uh, I'm happy to take a final word from. Oh, you never, oh, it's still. Which? Okay, gimme, um, I'm gonna call a recess while we hash this out a little bit.
Chair Char.
Okay, I'll bring us out of recess, uh. Yeah, uh, go ahead.
I, I was just wondering, I, I don't see a resolution on your Google Drive either. I know it was there in the past. I, I can load it up for you really quickly.
Yeah, if you don't mind, uh, emailing that to, uh, Curtis.
I could put it in your Google Drive right now.
Okay, if possible.
I think it's possible. Well, maybe I don't have access. Okay, I'll email it to Curtis.
Yeah, this is like the third reading or so, so, um. Yeah, uh, but, uh, okay, so, uh, while that happens, uh, do we have, I guess I'll take, um, uh, statements in favor of the resolution?
Uh, Chair, I want a quick clarification from Ross. Um, Ross, there's, uh, can you tell us if there are a variety of versions passed by other neighborhood boards? That is to say, you know, I wanna make sure that what we're about to vote on is the same as the one we discussed last time.
Hey, Ian, um, there have been different versions, uh, that this one is the standard one that was passed by the Makilo Neighborhood Board. Uh, I believe this is a similar version that Al Moana passed and recently, um, Moili.
Okay, uh. Yeah. Okay, do you have anyone speaking, uh, in favor of the resolution? Okay, seeing none for now. Is there anyone speaking against the resolution? I see. Oh, uh, is anyone from the attendees interested in speaking for or against this? Uh, support or a resolution for support of establishing an empty homes tax in Honolulu? Okay, seeing none?
It has to be roll call vote, right, for resolutions? Okay, uh, I'll go ahead and seeing as there's no further discussion, I'll call to question. Oh.
Oh.
Chair, I motion to adopt the resolution supporting an empty homes tax.
Okay, and we have had substantial discussion already, so call to vote.
Uh, resolution, uh, for support of establishing an empty homes tax in Honolulu. Char. I. Koano. Absent. Lakalaka, absent. Lee.
I.
I. Mitchell. I. Nakamoto.
I.
I. Peck.
I.
I. Ross. I. Salasa. I. Santos.
I.
I. Steelquist. I. Uh, the resolution has, oh, oh, yes, that's right. That's right. Uh, yes, Silva. I. Okay, uh, vote of ten. Eyes, zero. Nays, zero. Abstaining. Uh, the resolution has been adopted.
We did it. Okay. All right, thank you so much, Ross.
Congratulations, Board. Congratulations, Board Member Silva. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll go on, go ahead and move on to resolution requesting the Department of Education to expand the Korean language program for public school students within the Kaemuki McKinley Roosevelt Complex. Uh, do we have a motion? Okay, uh, Harris moves to adopt and Ian seconds. Uh, discussion, uh, do we have anyone to speak? Or we have had fairly substantial discussion on this, uh, before. Uh, do we have any final last words in support? Ian?
I'll speak very briefly and to say that, um, this board and our community are, have been tremendously benefited by the very active, uh, Korean community. We're literally meeting in the Korean Cultural Community Center, uh, that is where the former community library was. And I think this is an excellent initiative brought to us by a public school student, and I'm proud to support. Oh, private, pardon me, but in support from someone who is still in, uh, grade school, uh, in support of this. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anyone to speak against the resolution? Seeing none, uh, go ahead and close the discussion, uh, and bring it to the vote.
Voting on the, uh, resolution requesting the Department of Education to expand the Korean language program for public school students within the Kaemuki McKinley Roosevelt Complex. Char. I. Koano. Absent. Lakalaka, absent. Lee.
I.
I. Mitchell. I. Nakamoto. I. Peck.
I.
I. Ross. I. Salasa. I. Santos.
I.
I. Steelquist. I. Silva. I. On a vote of ten, zero, zero, uh, the resolution has been adopted.
Huzzah. Okay, um, moving on to the next bit of business. Resolution addressing traffic and safety hazards caused by Chick-fil-A Makiki operations. We have had substantial discussion on this, but if there's any, uh, updates that anyone would like to share, we'll start. We'll start with, uh, someone in favor of the resolution. Okay, if you could come up and give us your name?
Hi, good evening, Lindsay Chambers. Um, just wanted to share some prepared remarks about the resolution, and I'm glad we have quorum this evening. Um, this resolution is about safety and accountability. The drive-through line at Chick-fil-A Makiki is still backing up onto the street, blocks two lanes, makes it dangerous at night for drivers, and leads to illegal parking even on sidewalks. I've had to walk my dog on the road just to go around the line, and it's not safe. If customer or consumer behavior was easy to influence through awareness, as mentioned during the previous meeting, people would buckle up, not drive drunk or speed, but they don't. And in this particular case, I would even say that the system in place is not conducive to the business model for Chick-fil-A's drive-through and mobile order pickup. They are also not following the traffic management plan they submitted to get their permit. Kelly Akasaki from DTS confirmed in writing that it was required, so if that's true, why isn't the city enforcing it? This resolution isn't about punishing anyone. It asks Chick-fil-A and the city to come to the table to figure out long-term solutions. Santa Barbara dealt with this too. Their city council nearly declared Chick-fil-A a public nuisance, and that got results. Chick-fil-A created a traffic director role whose job, um, is making sure the drive-through line doesn't spill onto the street, which is noted in the resolution. And if DPP's rules say sandwich boards can't extend beyond a business's footprint, which is why Chick-fil-A's sandwich board signs were removed, why should cars be allowed to, especially when it puts people at risk? With the Waikiki location coming soon and extremely busy intersection, we have a chance to set the tone and model what it looks like when our government officials care about the safety of its residents. And lastly, just wanna close with, Chick-fil-A says they want to be a good neighbor, but they are not here tonight. They are not here in person. They are not here online. Instead, they have a hired P R rep who I believe is online. That doesn't feel like real engagement or a genuine attempt at being a good neighbor. Thanks for your consideration of the resolution.
Okay, with a speech, uh, in favor, or yeah, with comments in favor, uh, I'll take, um, an update from someone against. Uh, I'll give an opportunity for, uh, if the Chick-fil-A rep is online now.
Hi, good evening. Um, Kira Downing, Chick-fil-A rep. Um, yeah, I definitely, you know, I'm not against the. That, and we're, you know, all for safety, um, but I think the two issues have gotten kind of muddied. Um, and so as an update though, I mean, you know, we are committed to being accountable, Lindsay. We are, you know, committed to efficiency and service and being a good neighbor. Um, we did hear from DTS. We, um, they are gonna be studying the two right turn lanes. And, um, they said they would get back to us when they have more information, so they're, they're interested in exploring it, so that, I think, is positive momentum. Um, one thing that, I mean, I don't know if you folks have considered, one of the ideas maybe is to put signage on, on Queen Victoria's private property, and maybe that could help in the interim, since we're having some roadblocks putting signage, um, on the curbs. But that could be something that, I don't know, um, has been considered previously before my existence, but, um, um, that was one idea that I had since our last meeting. Um, otherwise, Chick-fil-A and we stand by the letter that was submitted last month, and just will continue to look for other opportunities. other opportunities to, to encourage safety and, you know, drivers with aloha.
Okay, Ian, is this a?
Generally a comment support the resolution with some notes that I would want to see for changes.
Okay, yeah, as a, I was about to say the comments in favor, so.
Is that, okay, first off, I mentioned this, I think, a couple of meetings back or whenever we first discussed it, I do think the resolution, resolution's well-written, it's well, very well researched. I do think the title is slightly too confrontational, resolution addressing traffic and safety hazards caused by Chick-fil-A Makiki operations. I'm not going to flat out call it like inaccurate, but we have noticed we've had a good working relationship with Chick-fil-A. So I recommend amending it to something like the traffic and safety hazards on that street. I think all, all the items there are well-called for. I take the Chick-fil-A representatives' suggestions about consideration by Queen Victoria seriously. If I understood some lip-reading a moment ago, my understanding is they have considered this, but they're a little too far away. But if we want to meet Chick-fil-A halfway, we could put a bullet point there saying, ask them to consider again. And we can just continue the discussion, maybe have some balance. I'm very strongly in favor of the, the title change and the second one is just something to consider. Thank you.
Would you like to make an amendment?
All right, I motioned to adopt the resolution with an amended title saying resolution addressing traffic and safety hazards on Baratania Street. And then additionally, for the immediate action that we call for, we add in a clause for Chick-fil-A, Queen Victoria Building and the city and county to just consider again the possibility of signage, just to show that we're considering all options that have been suggested.
Is there a second for this amendment? Okay, Eric seconded. Discussion. I believe Ian spoke in favor of the amendment. Do we have anyone to speak against the amendment? Yes. Yeah, the, the motion to amend, yes.
The motion to adopt.
Oh.
That way we all can adopt it.
Right, right, sure, sure, okay, sorry, so, yeah, so speaking in favor of adopting the resolution as amended, except that it hasn't been, or anyway. Chuck.
I, I just want to say that Ian alluded to it, but I think that this is still a work in progress for me, is my opinion. It's still a work in project, progress. And I think that, that being that the two sides are having good dialogue together and there seems to be more options coming up for me, I, I, I think we should still work on it.
Just to clarify, oh, okay, okay. Okay.
Can't hear.
Yeah, if you.
Yeah, so you don't want to vote now while they're still talking?
I prefer not to, but that's just me, but if the board is going to take a vote, then I will vote according to my conscience, yes.
Okay, so for, I guess, are there any further comments from anyone on the adopting the resolution as amended, starting, so we'll go with Sam, then Harris. Sam?
I think it's a good compromise. By taking out the adversarial language in the, on the title and putting in more agreeable language in the bill or in, in the resolution, we're making it easier for both sides to swallow it. So, you know, that's what an arbitrator would do. So I, I'm a hundred percent behind it.
Okay, next.
Yeah, you know, I, I really I like what Ian had mentioned in terms of amended. And also, this evening is, for me, in listening to the dialogue, I think it's, it's the closest that the two sides have gotten and I think it's a great opportunity to move this thing forward, so. I think there's a greater sense of, of, of joint solution awareness, so. I'm, I, I really like what, what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, are there any further, is there any further discussion from board members? Seeing none, I will take Lindsay and then Kira, just to get their input on this amended resolution, so we'll start with Lindsay.
I think two points, what really brought Chick-fil-A to the table to get to this point is my, my neighbors' persistence in being here. They still have not responded to the QVR board to meet with them. It is only through this venue and this resolution will hold them accountable to stay at the table and make good on these solutions that they're talking about. I think there is an issue with, I mean, QVR did discuss having the signage on property, it is far back, there's that grass in the middle, that's city and county property and having a signage on our, our property is too far in for cars to see. But again, I want to remind you that this is a problem that Chick-fil-A caused, not QVR, QVR was there first. We tried to work with them leading up to it and really their consistent violation of the traffic management plan, they're now saying in the letter that they don't have to follow it, that it's flexible, when Kelly from DTS said it was a requirement as part of the permit, just shows kind of the ongoing gaslighting that's happening with them. So I appreciate Kira coming to the table as a representative to make it appear like they're willing to work with us, but they have not been at the table with QVR. And I'm not speaking on behalf of QVR, this is what I've heard from our safety committee, that was formed to address this because of non-responsiveness.
Okay, Kira? And then I'll recognize Tom after.
Yeah. I, I guess the only part of the resolution that I have reservation is, is going back to the traffic management plan, this quote-unquote it. So I would be curious to know, you know, to talk to Kelly, because we're not, you know, misrepresenting what we've been told. We have in fact received confirmation from our representatives that, you know, this was a not official traffic management plan, it was a set of traffic mitigation scenarios that could be deployed at any one time or explored, so it's you know, we, we, we've been told we are compliant, you know, we're not in violation of anything, because technically this traffic, you know, quote-unquote traffic management plan is not a binding legal document like a normal traffic management plan. It was a set of traffic mitigation scenarios, so that's the only part that I think we're still kind of in disagreement about. And so, I, I also want to make a note too, just for reference, that the, the proposed location that's coming at Kapilani and Kalakaua would be a dine-in only, so a little bit different experience, but yeah, we are mitigating there too, the traffic.
Okay, thank you very much, Kira. Tom?
Okay, thank you, Chair. A couple of quick comments, and speaking in, in support of the direction of the resolution here by the board. The first is, as an attorney, what I've heard in the last couple of minutes from the very distinct, different perspectives of some of the speakers, it is really important to make sure that the Department of Planning and Permitting is at the table. I, I, I heard just too much wiggle room, if you will, without addressing directly the issues by the representative of Chick-fil-A. The key here, I think, is this. As an example, because I've already stated my support for the resolution. Very recently, this month, I had the opportunity to walk along Wai La Avenue in the area of McDonald's on Wai La and Palolo. And what all of a sudden caught my attention in this context of not just Chick-fil-A, but other high-traffic-volume drive-throughs, etc., is that if you are walking westbound on Wai La on the Maoka side, on the approach to McDonald's, is in fact, there are several city signs that are posted on, on signposts in terms of not blocking the traffic lane, no, no stopping and standing, and as well, no blockage of the business driveways that are on the approach to the McDonald's drive-through. And then McDonald's itself does have two additional signs very visible to Wai La traffic that are just on the other side of the entrance to the drive-through, since the drive-through is absolutely at the edge of the parcel. So there are things that can be done by the city. It is not just having to rely on the, the signage boards that are no longer permitted, etc. So there's a lot more that can officially be done by the city to help with this. And that's not even addressing any of the problems for, say, the right turn from Pensacola onto Baratania. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I guess we will call the vote.
All right, voting on the amended resolution addressing traffic and safety hazards on Baratania Street, correct? On Baratania Street was the amendment, on Baratania Street by Chick-fil-A? Yes, the type, the, the amended, yes. So just on Baratania Street, okay. Char. I. Lee.
Abstain.
Abstain. Mitchell. I. Nakamoto.
I.
I, Peck.
I.
I, Ross. I, Salasa. I, Santos.
I.
I, Steelquist. Abstain. Silva. I. Kawano and Lakalaka Manupuna are absent on a vote of eight ayes, zero nays, and two abstentions. The resolution is not adopted. Need, you need nine.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Unfortunately, it looks like we shot it down. Okay, moving on to the resolution supporting speed humps on King Street and Baratania Street between Pono Street and Ward Avenue. I guess I was the one who wrote this, so I will temporarily hand chairship over to Vice Chair.
Okay. You want to give your pres, your presentation?
Yep, so first off, I motioned to adopt the resolution. Yep, so there have been a lot of concerns regarding traffic on King Street and Baratania Street, including the stuff from Chick-fil-A. And then on top of that, we've had, you know, Nancy come here and talk about major concern, traffic concerns. And then historically speaking, you know, Harris has brought up concerns, Chuck has brought up concerns of racing and other speeding all along King Street and Baratania. It is, oh, sorry, furthermore, we have increased development all along this corridor. You know, we have the giant affordable housing that's planned to go up on Peikoi and Young, which will add yet more traffic. And then, of course, in our neighborhoods, or sorry, further up the neighborhood, we have a number of affordable housing going up, be it Bill 7 or not. But that'll all further add yet more folks on our roads. So really, this resolution is looking forward to try and mitigate current circumstances. After all, we have had some fairly nasty accidents, including children, you know, further down at Kapilani. So I'm hoping that we can nip this in the bud and try and get a forward-thinking solution to our problems.
Okay. Is there a policy with you? Okay.
My hand is up. Santos.
Yeah. Clara, recognize.
Okay. I just want to bring up something I hadn't thought about, which has been on the news recently, is that the, we've kind of gone speed hump crazy in Honolulu and it is slowing down the first responders. Slowing the fire trucks, slowing the ambulances, trying to get to where they need to be, and you know, all the major hospitals are right here and Baratania and South King are, are the feeders. So I, I do have a concern about adding more speed humps. I'd like to hear more from, you know, fire EMS about, you know, what they think about these things. Would they support more speed humps or is it really delaying service in life-threatening situations?
I really want to answer that. Go ahead.
May I recommend that we consider forwarding that question to the mayor's rep or to HBD or the Honolulu Fire Department? That seems like a question that could be very well-suited to answer.
It's kind of what I just said, Ian.
Sam?
I move that we table the motion and send a letter to the mayor's office and the fire department exactly on the issue.
Okay, a motion to be table must be voted on immediately. All those in favor of tabling the motion?
I.
Okay. Are you, are you going to, roll call on that? No roll call. Okay, good, unanimous consent for tabling the motion until we hear from the Fire Department and Mayor. Okay. All those in favor of tabling? Anyone opposed to tabling the motion? Abstaining, yeah. All right. For next time, then.
Okay, thank you very much. So our resolution is tabled until next time and hopefully we can get an answer from the mayor's office or some emergency responders on whether or not the speed humps will significantly affect their responses. Okay, moving on to state of Hawaii elected official reports. Starting with Governor Josh Green's representative, Russell Payne.
I'm here, one second. Hello, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I did put Governor's April newsletter in the chatroom, so you can see the latest update there. Wanted to give you a few things that are going on in the state of Hawaii government. Last month, I shared with you some news about Operation Hare Hawaii. That's the state's effort to address those impacted by the federal layoffs and resignations, targeted outreach for those individuals. The Department of Human Resources Development held a job fair, a career fair last weekend, it was very well-attended. And there is another opportunity, if you know anyone impacted by the federal layoffs or think you might be impacted by federal layoffs. There is an event on Wednesday, April 30th, 9 to 2 p.m. at the Blazin Exhibition Hall. This is the Honolulu Star Advertisers Career Expo. And I'll, I'll put some additional information in the chatroom about that as well. The other item I want to bring up is the Department of Health is encouraging everyone to make sure that you and your children are up to date on measles vaccinations. You may have seen in the news, a child what, there was a confirmed case a couple of weeks ago. And just today, the department announced the second confirmed case of measles related to that individual. So I'll put some information on what the Department of Health is recommending as far as vaccinations for children as well as for adults. Finally, this April is Tsunami Awareness Month and the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency has a very good tsunami zone. tsunami zone map. Um, although Makiki District, of course, is not within the tsunami zone, um, area. It's always good to know where those inundation areas could be, because you could work there. Uh, you may know people who live there as well. So I'll put that map in there. Uh, it's quite interesting to take a look at it. And with that, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Okay, uh, are there any board questions for the governor's rep? Seeing none, are there any questions or concerns from attendees? For the governor's rep? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, uh, thank you very much, Russell. Uh, next up, we have Senator Kara Fukunaga.
Good evening, board members. Oops. Just wanted to highlight a couple of positive things in the community. I know that last week, the Department of Parks and Recreation had emailed a number of us regarding some of the, uh, concerns that were raised in the news coverage regarding, uh, break-ins into the Makiki Gardens and really severe conditions affecting Makiki District Park. So one of the things, um, I did want to highlight is we've had a number of community organizations really stepping up to, um, take care of and clean up in their areas. Recently in March, the Papakolea Firewise Team did some cleanups in Kanaha Stream. Also would like to, uh, recognize TCA, Tatlus Community Association, has continued to do their community cleanups. And as part of what we are now focusing on, as between our parks in Makiki as well as, um, this afternoon at Cartwright Field, we had a dedication of Cartwright Field as the oldest continually operating baseball field in the United States. And so that was really a very, very positive note. And so, uh, we are kind of excited about that because the next step is really to organize some of the groups, uh, that are around that park area. I know that the Nice Neighborhood Committee has been working with some of the groups that have been complaining. And it was very, um, gratifying this afternoon to learn that the Masonic Hall Group has been doing regular cleanups of Cartwright Field over the years. So we're looking at opportunities to connect some of the businesses in the area so that we can engage, um, more thoroughly there. On a positive note, uh, for those of you who, uh, happen to notice, there have been a number of bonfires in the Punch Bowl, uh, Puwaina area. Uh, we have now been able to, um, reach out to and engage with Department of Law Enforcement, who is going to be working with a lot of the city and state agencies as well as National Memorial Cemetery of the Pacific to see if we can, um, undertake multi-jurisdictional agency support to really clean up the area, make sure that we solve some of those problems. And hopefully for, um, some residents in the Punch Bowl area, if some of the people who have been traveling back and forth between that site and other areas where they may be engaged in illegal activity, hopefully we'll be able to clean up the broader neighborhood as well. So while we're waiting, you know, to, uh, see what finally, uh, materializes at the legislature on this round, this was really a good time to celebrate some of the good things that are happening in the community. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, unfortunately, in the interest of time, uh, if you don't mind taking your questions up with the Senator after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
But I'm not there.
Oh, yeah, Claire.
Just a quick one, thank you, Chair. Um, Senator Fukunaga, yes, I was there. Um, my neighbors woke me up at five thirty in the morning for the fire a week and a half ago. Um, and the population of homeless people are interspersed all over the back of Punch Bowl. There was a cleanup by that station area, uh, last month or so, uh, by the feds. Or was it the state? And they, um, so taking small steps, but HPD is involved. And of course, HFD is putting out the fires. So thank you for your ongoing support and, um, helping to facilitate getting these agencies involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Claire, and thank you, Senator. Okay, uh, moving on to Representative Della Albaladi's office, I see Tom.
Aloha, Chair. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, in the interest of time, I very much appreciate Senator Fukunaga's summary on a number of points, uh, that she has been, uh, coordinating, uh, meetings and other outreach, uh, both with officials and members of the community. Uh, and a lot of that will continue, uh, especially as we move into interim, hopefully in two weeks. Uh, so just to emphasize, uh, we are in the busiest time, uh, at the legislature at this point. Uh, allegedly tomorrow is Good Friday holiday. Uh, but next week are the final five days of the conference period. Uh, the opportunity to resolve differences, uh, between amend, bills that were amended, uh, by either the House or Senate, uh, and disagreed to, uh, in that regard. Uh, so next week, super busy, uh, everything must be reported out, uh, of conference committee if it's to move forward, uh, by either a Thursday or Friday deadline, uh, depending on the committee referral. Uh, so if you have, uh, questions, uh, of the process or whatever, uh, feel free to call any of us. Uh, and as well, uh, communication is the key. Uh, the conference committees directly do not accept public testimony at this point. It, it's the time to resolve differences between the House and Senate. Uh, but communicating to the elected officials, uh, directly, uh, is absolutely important, uh, at this time. So, uh, whether by phone call or especially by email, uh, at this point, uh, we've got tons of, uh, information coming in. So, uh, with that, again, any questions or whatever, feel to free, free to call us, uh, at any time. Thanks, Chair.
Yep, and, uh, again, in, in the interest of time, uh, please take up your questions or concerns with, uh, uh, excuse me, with Rep Baladi's office, uh, outside the meeting. Thank you very much, Tom.
Aloha.
Okay, uh, moving on to Representative Kim Coco Iwamoto. Okay, seeing none, uh, Representative Ikaike Olds.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Um, okay. Uh, aloha, Chair and board members. My name is Susanna Condi-Cotzi on behalf of Representative Olds, District, District twenty-three. Um, I brought it, I've added reps' contact info there, our email signup form and the latest April newsletter, um, which can be found on, in the links tab on the Capitol website. Um, I can take any questions or you can share or email or call in your questions, um, and I will make sure that Rep addresses them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Cat, I'm sorry, Susanna. Uh, yeah, uh, in the interest of time, uh, if anyone has any comments or concerns for the, uh, Ikaike Olds, if you don't mind taking them outside, uh, this meeting. Okay, yep, thank you very much. Okay, uh, next up, we have, uh, Representative Andrew Garrett.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Hi, um, I'm representing Representative Andrew Taker Garrett. Um, I also included the link on the chat box for you to look at his latest, uh, spring newsletter. So hopefully you can take a look at it. We just wanted to say, actually, I'm echoing what Tom had said, that, you know, we started the conference committee where the House and Senate negotiate final forms of bills. Um, there are about two hundred and thirty-one bills and I'm leading, actually, Rep Garrett is leading about twenty of them pertaining to higher education, which he is a chair of. Um, we, again, like Ed said, we're encouraging members to email him if they have any thoughts on any bills still alive. Session adjourns May second, so we have some highlights to share during the board's May meeting. Um, thank you, and if you have any questions, please forward that to us later. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Uh, and yeah, as she indicated, if you have any questions or concerns, please take them up outside the meeting. Okay, uh, and then, uh, go into board and community reports really quick, uh, starting with Nice Neighborhoods, Harris, do you have anything?
Yep, thank you, Chair. Um, our next meeting is on Monday, April twenty-eight. I think, um, when, uh, Curtis, we need to add in the the previous meeting on our regular board meeting, the Punch Bowl perimeter was discussed and, uh, Representative, uh, Baladi, uh, she mentioned that, uh, because of the fire, uh, I guess there was some concern by the Royal Vista condo. And that's connected to the, the gate that we're looking at to kind of close off that area that, uh, there's a lot of encampment, people trafficking that area. And, uh, and Chair, uh, uh, Char, we need to kind of reconnect with Nuano and Punch Bowl Neighborhood Board. Because, uh, that would be a, a good, uh, partnership. Um, but otherwise, uh, the agenda is set, um, and we have, uh, um, ongoing follow-ups, uh, with, uh, fourteen twenty-seven Ernest and, uh, Tipsy Peak too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Harris. Uh, next up, the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl and Neighborhood Security Watch, Chuck, do you have anything? Okay, nope, thank you very much. Uh, and then Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization's Steelquist.
For next two-year plan for twenty-six, twenty-seven, out for review, uh, we're going to review it this year, through next year. And all the federal funds that go to transportation, gravel for the seabeds, uh, there's all kinds of money. We have, we have a chance to fix this.
Yeah. Okay, and then, uh, um, of, of note, I believe Curtis put the, this, uh, document in our Google Drive. And it's in the written summary from March. So if you'd like to review that, uh, you can do that there. Okay, now I'm going to go return to the mayor's report, uh, because we have the housing director here.
Aloha, Chair and board members. I'm, uh, I'm Kevin O'Shea. I'm the executive director for the mayor's office of housing for the city. And, uh, I just wanted to come briefly to, uh, inform the inform the, the board, um, that the city, which recently, uh, condemned fourteen twenty-one Pensacola, um, is now seeking a development partner. And we've issued a request for qualifications, looking for a development partner. And, uh, once we make a selection, uh, we'll come back to the board and, and give you an update on that. But we just wanted to, as a courtesy, just to let you know that the property was in play and that, um, if you had any questions about that, you know, we put a little brochure together and you're welcome to call our office or email me or, um, whatever the case might be. I also understand that the board had a number of questions about Bill seven projects and, um, naturally, as the housing director, I'm, uh, I'm here and, you know, eager to respond to any questions that you may have. I don't know if we can do that tonight in the interest of time, but, um, if you do have questions about that, I'm happy to come back anytime. Um, you know, we, we have a, an aggressive, um, housing plan and we have a lot of stuff going on. We hope that it's good stuff. And we're happy to come back to you and talk to you about that at any time. Just, just let me know.
Okay, yeah, we would love for you to, I imagine there's going to be a lot of questions and we certainly don't quite have the time to get them all answered. So, uh, if you don't mind.
Just contact info, please.
Yeah, uh, anyway, okay, so, uh, we would love to have you next month, uh, and we'll go ahead and, uh, since he's here in person, uh, we'll go ahead and take those questions, uh, in person. So starting with, uh, board members. Ian.
Can we get a, uh, by the way, I love this, it's a great update. Can we get a digital version for our folder?
Sure, yeah, we can send it along. Oh, it's on, there you go. Very efficient.
Okay, yep, Chuck.
Um, yeah, how much control will the city have, you know, once the process is going and you select the contractor or developer, et cetera?
Yeah, so we set, we selected developer, um, because the city is, we don't have the capacity to be developers or contractors. So we, we selected developer who will go through the entitlement process, the permitting process, any environmental review that's required for that property. I would assume that there's very little because it's, it's so, it's a pretty small lot. Um, and then, uh, the developer comes to DPP and, and seeks permits. But during that process, they need to come to the neighborhood board and talk to you folks. So you'll have an opportunity for input around what they're doing. That's a condition of our, our ground lease in the process.
So, um, i- is there a possibility that this could be a Bill seven project?
I would believe so, yeah, given that's, given the size of that lot, I think that it's
Sort of likelihood is a Bill seven?
It's highly likely, yeah, the probability of that.
Well, I, I, I mean, I commend you for putting this together. I, I clear stated that, you know, this was like a great template on what a Bill seven project should be as far as presentation to, you know, transparency from the beginning.
Yeah, we, we're trying to get better at that, uh, for sure. We have a lot on our plate and, and, and when we put the, uh, the proposal, we should have come to you before we put the request for, uh, qualifications out, just to let you know, but we're still in the process. So we just wanted to keep you up to date.
Okay, John?
Yeah, uh, it seems a little confusing what we get. And we're not sure that they're going to respond to us. The, the contractor we had said, oh, forget the neighborhood board, which is not something we like to hear. So is there a way we could have something, some kind of a sustainability analysis by the contractor? Say, this is actually something that could happen. Because right now we've got one that's very small, it's probably not going to work, it's just going to leave, you know, dozen unusual apartments in Makiki. So it's, it's, it doesn't seem to have a close to it like the normal billing process. I'm a little worried about it, Chapter seven.
Yeah, I'm not quite certain I understand the question, but I guess, I guess the difference between a market Bill seven project and a city project is that the city has oversight over the project and we can be, ensure that the developer comes in.
Chapter seven, they don't have to do anything. Well, that's not, that doesn't seem right.
Gotcha.
Okay, any further questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, uh, questions from any attendees? Yep.
Rich guys, so we hear earlier, uh, listening to some of the concerns that, okay, so, uh, I think the biggest, okay, I think the biggest thing that we have concerns about, I'm in a neighborhood, uh, fourteen twenty-seven, it's a total disaster in my opinion of what's going on. And I think the key is that the developer, getting the developer to be part of, you know, transparency, but and also being a good neighbor and being able to figure out what's going on and how to fix the problems that we're having before these continue to be on other projects that seem to be continuing on. And it's the same developer using the different ones. And Paul Lamb is the developer for fourteen twenty-seven. And he has not made any consideration to be part of helping us figure out what can be done to fix the problems that, that exist right now.
And I thank you very much for those comments. So, um, in terms of, so recently, uh, I had an opportunity to sit with Councilmember Nishimoto. And I think it was about two weeks ago. And that was the first time that I, I had personally heard concerns from the community about Bill seven projects. So I can, um, I can convey that as a result of that discussion with Councilmember Nishimoto, the concern has been elevated for sure. I think it would be helpful for the board to articulate the, the problems, the concerns. I, you know, I, I got an opportunity to see some of those comments earlier. It would be, let's, you, let's memorialize those, get those into the city. Because once that process starts through a riser process, then it gives us an opportunity to respond and, and to look at it deeper. And, and so this, one of the reasons I felt it was important to come tonight was after the conversation with Councilmember Nishimoto. I said, we know, we're going to do another one and the city's going to sponsor, we should be there. Um, and so I'm here, I'm Kevin, and, and if you need, you have questions, just reach out to us. That'd be great.
Okay, um, Chuck?
Um, we, um, we're in the Nice Neighborhood, um, committee and this is one of our
We're in the Nice Neighborhood Committee, and this is one of our projects, and we have a meeting set up with Councilman
Where?
Next, it's in May thirteenth, and we'd like to know if you would possibly be able to attend.
If I'm, yeah, I got a lot of nights jammed up, but if the calendar's free, I guarantee I'll be here.
Okay, I'll send you an email. Thank you.
Harris, do you?
Oh, no, I mean, it's very I'm glad that Councilmember Nishimoto spoke to you. And Bill Seven is definitely a really hot topic, and as the residents mentioned, I think it'd be good to have that dialogue, and I know it's going to take a lot of time, so you know, in terms of, we are definitely looking to raise the raise the issue because of the impact, the negative impacts it's been having in the residents. And I think that's why Councilmember Nishimoto had talked to you. And but we're really, we're really thankful that you came tonight. And, you know, fortunately, it's almost at the end of the meeting, but I think if we started and had had some some, you know, good time and dialogue, I think we could really do some good things to to kind of make some adjustments on that bill.
You know, if you, if the board could articulate its concerns, and he can get that to us and to Councilmember Nishimoto, sorry, I'm not talking into the mic, if I think that that would be really helpful, because if I'll, I'm happy to come back and talk to you for however long it takes.
So Megan, Megan Johnson, who is, she already probably took a lot of notes that that we had shared earlier in the meeting, so maybe that would be a good
A good start.
Good start, yeah.
And then if, if it makes sense, in the in the board would, you know, I can come back to you and talk to you myself, and I'll give you all the time I have, right? If, if we think we need additional representatives from the city here, we can convene that as well. And if we need to do that in a separate, in an independent meeting, so we have a little bit more time, because this is kind of rushed, this format, we're happy to do that as well. So and we could do two things. One is, you know, I could come and we could have a conversation. And then if we feel like we want to, you know, bring others into that dialogue, we can do that as well. So whatever works for the board, we're flexible.
Okay, I believe we might, depending how fast Claire's concern is, but we'll go ahead and take up Claire.
Thanks, I'll go fast. Welcome. You're new to the problem of the misuse and abuse of Bill Seven. My former self, and I'm a board member, and my community, we've been, we've been tracking this and talking to people for two years now. This is not a new thing. You're new, so I'm happy to fill you in, but the mayor and the city council have been given a full PowerPoint with with the dialogue. They are, this neighborhood board, we did adopt a resolution in opposition to one of the projects that are pending by this Paul Lamb developer. So there's a lot for you to catch up on, and I'm happy to help. So is your contact information on the brochures? I'm under the weather, so I stayed away from you folks today. But I, how to reach you?
The Office of Housing email is on the brochure.
Okay, good. Okay, so then we'll get you up to speed on on all that's gone on and where we're at now, because the existing Bill Seven tenements that are two hundred and thirty square feet are becoming a crime-ridden haven. And this same developer has multiple projects down, you know, in the pipeline, and we really need to, as Rich Kaz says, put a pause on further development by this person and take a look at what makes sense for the community. So thank you, and thank you, Chair. I went fast.
Yeah, no, thank you, Claire. Okay, with that, I believe we're just about out of time. So if there are any further, I see Michelle Luke, I'm so sorry we couldn't get to you. If you could go ahead and contact the Housing Director outside of this meeting. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
And I look forward to seeing you again.
Look forward to coming back. Thanks for, thanks for your time this evening.
Okay, and with that, as I said, we're just about out of time. Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, and that's, and adjourn at eight fourteen.